Okay, we're on. Are you going to training tomorrow? Are you going to the training tomorrow?
Is that tomorrow?
Mm-hmm. If not, it's fine, I'm going, I can go on behalf of council. Remind me to put legislation in.
For the show, because I... I think I've got a doctor's appointment with the brother-in-law in the morning.
Okay. I think I gotta be up at eight. Which is not gonna be fun. Eight or not. But he's giving me a shortcut. I'm gonna take it.
You always take success. The only benefit would take over till I decline.
I got the holiday in Grove City. Because I can be in Grove City from my house in like forty-five minutes. So I just get on back and it's seventy-one. Something, not a big deal. We'll go to this work session and I'll go home, get some hours sleep, and good to go.
Oh, you're coming at seventy-one?
Well, I will be tomorrow. I'll be coming from my house.
So when you go up seventy-one, I think we should figure to stay on seventy-one?
No, 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 Google Maps still has me going six seventy-five to seventy. But that, I checked that last night, so I don't know what it's gonna do in the morning.
Okay, track. Alright, you ready?
Yeah. I'll figure it out.
That calls for order, the Newt Cartlisle City Council Work Session, April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, at seven AM. Mister Cook? Here?
Yeah, I think I'm here.
Mister Cook?
Here.
Mister Shannon?
Here.
We have three members absent, I am present. I will be the dedication tonight. Y'all, all right. Standing hand. Happy Father, thank you for the stay, thank you for the... We avoided, we had a speaking moment, the weather's been amazingly well, so the park and all citizens can enjoy this, the park season, that is a promise. G. Sanfr, amen. And we'll leave the flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have amendments, dedications, and city management support. Are some members of the public? None? Any dedications, legislations, none? Other business? All right, fantastic. So Mister Cook has presented us with the Huber Heights Board of Representatives' handbook, and you guys were attempting to write some rules last year, having a hama, it gets in the way to the broken staff for you guys. So, you guys have money, so we need to get the ball rolling for you all. So, I'm here tonight, and Mister Cook, this is your vote, but you can start. You just tell us what page you need to be on.
Well, primarily, do you want to go through it page by page? And if nobody... And I assume that neither one of them have seen a copy of this, am I correct?
No. I didn't know they were reading tonight until four.
Okay. You told councilman Liedy about it, and we waited for you guys to get your schedules together, but I actually forward your vote this right now, if you want to give me your comments.
S.T.
S.T.
A.C.
A.C.
E.
E.
W.C.
W.C.
G.M.
G.M. And thank you.
Thank you. You can leave us.
I'll call you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. We'll use this.
Oof. I was gonna email this.
Thank you.
You should have your tuxes lightened, sending. Alright, sorry. So Mister Cook, please go ahead.
Primarily, this thing is designed for all of their boards and commissions. I don't think it takes anything away from what we are doing. The only thing that I have found that it does, it puts a councilman also on the local boards for an advisory capacity. They will not be a voting member. This in turn will also give us more feedback at council meetings from these committees. Because, for example, there are times that we have, I guess the word is, ask for feedback from other committees, we've heard nothing at all. And in order to keep the transparency of what's going on with the workings of the city government, I think this will help us knowing what you folks are doing, what each and every board or commission might want to do. And I think when we get around to budget time, this might also help us decide what we need to do as far as adding money into the budget for plans that you folks have. And I know there was talk about some plans for an Easter egg hunt, and it kinda went by the wayside. There are a lot of other things that I would like to see incorporated into Parks and Recreation, one of which would be the Fourth of July fireworks deal, if we continue it from this year on. I'm hoping to bring it back as a means of giving back to the citizens, a means of doing things. I know there's also some other things in the works. Right now, I'm working on a event here May fifth to also, I guess the word is, enhance the fire lighting. I've got a band consequently scheduled from seven to nine. We have a little cringle in the works, but we'll get into that later. They're gonna be here from seven to nine, we thought about having some food trucks. I know we have the Little League Parade that day. This would also give us a closing to that day. So, these are things that we can go on, and I think as Mister Bridges said before, if we give a lot of things back to the city, things that aren't gonna create money problems or causing a problem with the budget, then I think we're gonna have a much better city to operate with. You know, you all have different ideas of what we need to do, and I think we need to get those ideas incorporated. And I know I'm running off the job.
So, I have pulled up here on my phone, I forgot to print this one out. The Parks and Board Bibles you submitted to us, and our attorney table had that, and she had some concerns with them. But is there anything particularly, Mister Cook, that you would like to have for their Bibles, to institute it for theirs? This grouping? I mean, I may use it eligibility of the board members. Currently, are the board members on terms?
Mm-hmm.
What is the term?
I think it depends on the board.
Board, okay. I know, because I know BZI, I don't want to go down the charts. So, it's been probably six years.
I think most of them are like two.
Two, okay.
Maybe.
Does Parks and Rec have it in theirs?
I don't, I don't know if that's actually... Because the board, I'm talking about, like, the Board of Attorney Appeals, the Planning Board, the Tax Commission, um, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I honestly don't know the answer. But it seems to me that if it's set policy, and it's determined that how this council, we're gonna have them as a two-year term or a one-year term, however you guys decide.
Well, I think with the way that this is set out, it gives us terms, it also gives us a means of, if you have a board member that isn't responding or isn't showing up for meetings, it gives us a reason to, let's say, terminate them for one of them a better term. I think it gives us a more concise way of doing business.
Well, then, I think you're good forward with this. I think we'll pop on here. So eligibility of city board members is on page four. Do you have it there? Do you? Yeah. But I don't have any copies.
Sorry.
So, eligibility of city board members, could this be a statement that...
Dale, you want to scoot over here, you can look on my laptop screen.
That's right.
Are you sure?
Would anyone have an objection to add?
You don't mean email?
To the eligibility requirements. For some, is that a member of the city boards and commissions are required to be legal residents of the city for Newt Cartlisle, at Huber Heights, at least one year, must be a registered voter of the city charter. All the city boards and commissions serve without compensation in volunteer capacity, the city manager, or as a non-voting ex- effective member of each city board and commission except the first novel of appeal, which we have actually more exceptions for that charter. For other specific eligibility requirements, please refer to the charter or original ordinance. So we actually follow those ordinance. So, would you guys object to any of that in there at all?
No.
Eligibility, the eligibility? Okay. Screening and appointments, city boards and commissions, whether the city exists, whether the board is eligible. In regards to the appointment process, that you have, is here in the Huber Heights Charter, or board and commission. You have added one.
Hey, what'd you strike out on that first one?
It says for ex- effective matters, each city board or commission, except, so I struck out.
So the whole last paragraph?
Yeah, and then for specific eligibility requirements.
That's my strike through my end, so I can have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So for the eligibility, that's good. For the term of office, you guys have here, shall serve four years to a term. Does anyone have objections to that? How long do you think a board member should serve?
The minimum board we have, I must, they're all two. I'm now starting to go through this.
They're all, every board is two?
I think I'm almost positive.
Really? I think, I think in the past, it's always been two. You know, and again, this is a work in progress. The reason to bring this up is, we can change and do anything before this is to be voted upon. But in my estimation, the two years, I think, is a good factor. At that point, we can determine, we can be determined their attendance, how things are going, if there is some conflict that maybe needs to be addressed.
So you also have to look at the problems you have getting people to serve.
Yeah.
We don't have any issues with the BZI Air Planning Board.
I've never had an issue trying to get seats that filled. I don't know how this is gonna go. This is a very fun active for, so I don't, I don't know if I have any issues. The boring ones are hard to fill, like the Tax Review Commission, no one ever wants to do that.
We have a Civil Rights Commission.
Not only, I've never even done anything with civil rights, they're a six-year labor worker. No one wants to do it. There's a Human Rights Appeal, there's a Human Rights Board too, that one would want to be on.
So, would you guys get objections to two years?
Yeah.
For our standards?
That's fine.
Alright, so two years? Fantastic.
What page do you want, I'm sorry?
Page four.
I don't know if mine's lined up like everyone else's, but it should be. Bottom page four terms?
Yeah. Alright, it's a serving and appointment to city boards and commissions, and it just kinda goes through how they apply for the board, so it's actually near rules, is where they had terms of office. So I think we should just add in...
Now, if you go down though, it gets into that link to service and terms on city board and commission, on page, bottom of page five.
Page five.
So that'd be a good place.
Yeah, so link to term of service, so yeah, I think changing it from three to five to two-year terms.
Okay, you want two-year terms?
If everyone is in agreement to that.
Absolutely. Let me track my two-years.
I'll get this set up.
Okay, so that's just gonna read, we're gonna exit out of all that. Generally, the terms of all the city boards and commissions shall be...
Two years?
Yes.
Okay. Another recommendation I would look at is word generally, to start that, because it's a term that can mean anything. So, I would just start it at the terms of office. You, everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to make any kind of a declaration in here that the present members of the board shall remain in office through their terms?
Well, there are appointed board members, even with the new rules, they would still serve.
Correct.
And then to be reconstituted. All points, city boards and commissions are reviewed by the motion of council, with the majority of confirmation votes, scheduled, oh, scheduled, sorry, a regular Newt Cartlisle City Council meeting, for a specific term of office. The appointment to the city board and commissions is still vacancy for the unexpired term, the appointment may all the further range.
Are you writing on yours too?
Yes.
Okay. We'll review them together on a later date, make sure I got everything.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, I can go over there. Anyway, I'm looking at, so now we have links to service, so on page six. Staff liaisons, our city staff assigned to the city manager.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the rest of this, um, terms real quick. Okay, see if there's anything on there, give me one second. Oh, we can do it later, but I'd rather just do it now. The city council's reappointment, okay. Wow, okay, that's none of my business. Grant authority to release personal information. Okay, that seems heavy.
Yeah.
And then there's stuff about driving, and driving checks, and stuff that we want.
Like that, so yeah, if you guys see it, let me know, we'll cut it out, so, you know, the city council made a...
I think the first par, first sentence is fine, where it goes reappointment to a membership of city board, the city council may opt to post a notice, that's fine. Where does it get really weird at? If the city decides to reappoint, that's not weird. That's where, what is that grant of authority to release personal information?
Well...
And then after that, the second time.
Yeah, let's just, what do you think, cross that out, say that doesn't affect our board at all?
Do we just cross it out from the, if the city council decides, and then keep up applicants for upcoming vacancy on city board or commission?
I think we just say, if the city council decides to reappoint, if the senior board or commission member to a new term, the reappointment will require the board or commission again to sign and submit updated resume.
Oh, that's a good one. I mean, well, another...
Application.
Application, yeah.
We do application?
Yeah, we normally do application.
And then cross out grant of authorities for that whole random sentence?
Yeah, that whole craziness, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Or commit to sign during, yeah, and cross out that next sentence.
Next sentence, whole thing?
Yeah, because it just goes directly to council for above.
Okay, done?
Come on, the background.
We're not doing background checks on people, are we?
No. We have not asked correctly.
Mm-hmm. I mean, for people who actually, like, work, but not for citizens.
Okay, so you're striking that whole thing out?
Yeah. Range of motion, your comments?
Well, actually, let me think about this, and let me get you guys' recommendations. Should we do background checks on Parks and Rec board people? Because they're in the parks, they're doing things for kids, that's a bad idea. We can get them done for like thirty-five bucks. Now, thirty-five to do BCI, and a seventy to do, like, all across, like, the whole country. The last thing we want is someone come in here and have a... I don't know, I'm just giving it, I'm just giving...
Let me, let me ask a dumb question. If we don't do a background check, and we get into a situation where we have a pedophile, we would be liable?
We would be liable.
Then we're gonna be liable.
So do we do the same thing, like, for all committees and council and all that stuff too?
Well, no, but...
I don't know if that would be like a...
Well, the difference is, you guys are in parks, you're dealing with kids. Whereas the other ones are like, Board of Attorney Appeals, to where someone's gonna have one of their variants for their fence, or Planning Board, one must have split their lot up into sixty difference. I mean, I, that's just, I mean, I don't know, it's fully up to debate. I don't know what the outcome would be. Some people may think it's weird, but I don't know. What if we put someone on the Parks and Rec Board that has a limit to how far away they can be from a park or a school? And then we say, yeah, come on our board and help us make our little kids happy, and then we turn around and have...
Church.
I don't know, I'm just, that's how my mind operates.
Well, if you think about it, I mean, it's happening somewhere.
Right. There's a reason it's in there, right?
We have a due diligence to protect the citizens.
Absolutely. So what do you...
I'm, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. Well, I'm kinda thinking that this is a protection...
That's probably it, yeah.
And it may be needed. Right now, I don't have a problem with what we've got, but there, with the situation developing with the pedophiles, everything else that's coming up, I mean, look at the school system. Not necessarily here, we've got Heimberg, we have several others.
Because the other flip side of this is, we can check the database registry based off their application. Does that make sense? Like, if someone applies, they'll tell you, can't we search the database?
Yeah, they have to be based on the age of this website.
And then do it that way, so it's not a formal background check?
No, it's a consent.
But I'm almost positive, don't we have to give consent? No, you don't have to give consent.
Not for pilot records, you don't have to.
You can just go by the file, but however, let's say we do a background check, and someone has done, they have something that are concerning to us as a board or law director at the time.
And how are we gonna prove that we just went to some website and checked it out, and had any paperwork that says we actually did a background check?
And I could be wrong, but don't those only last for so long? Like, don't, like, they're only on the registry, yeah?
Well, depends on the tier you are.
Right.
If you're a tier one, then you don't have forever. But if you're like a tier three, five years, ten years, twenty years, I don't know what it is, but let's say it's only five years. Who does it say, five years, so it's not the teacher down, substitute teacher down in Heimberg's got five years. But six years, she's off.
I still would have them around, I'd put these two years.
That's all changed, that's a good point, right? It's still possible.
Six years, you're right.
Oh, you're clear, that's right.
So, yeah, I think we should definitely keep in this section here, that says, if you're gonna object to background check, driving check approved, driving check, I'm really mean, because they're not gonna be...
I won't be driving any, well, yeah.
Well, if you're really just gonna get in at that point in the car, but background check is approved by the, let's put, city manager and city council recommend as the appointment.
I'm just gonna put your guys' approval on it, it has to do with your board.
Alright, so good for me.
I want none to do with that. I will gladly run the background check for you and email you the results.
Right.
But I don't, I, no offense to anyone, but I don't want to be in that decision. I believe we can call this pre-screen.
Do you think by asking an applicant for a permission to do a background check, would deter any person?
It could. Well, I'll be honest with you, if it does deter them, it may be for a reason.
Yeah.
You know, so, and I can make up, because we have a general board application, and I can make up one special Parks and Rec, and like, you will be subject to a background check.
Yeah.
You know, if they say no, then we don't move forward.
And if they get worried about it, then they probably shouldn't be on the Parks and Rec.
Well, I would have to agree.
Yeah.
My thinking is, that might be the first step in preventing you from spending the money.
Yeah. So, any other section on here that you guys are wanting to add?
Mister Cook, that's all, Mister Cook, sorry.
If, if you're looking at thirty-five dollars to do a background check...
It could be seventy, actually.
Okay. And you want to do that every two years?
It's gonna be expensive. But a lawsuit's gonna cost a lot.
Once you go to four years, you're gonna make it work as well.
Well, because the other flip side of that, and that's a good, because you would not do it less, but what if someone is on that board and then has an issue? And then they're not getting checked again for four years? So it's like a double-edged sword, I totally get you, it would save money.
We, we have to do this for our church. Anybody that works with kids has to have a background check, and we do it yearly. So, it's a lot, it's a lot of money, but...
It is.
It's our kids.
Protect our children, that's much more important.
Let me, oh, I gotta, I gotta look at this background check form.
Why don't, why don't we take...
Thirty-five dollars for BCI, that's for your criminal investigations. What are the other one that goes with the BCI background?
It's federal, isn't it? It's federal, and then the...
One requires a fingerprint, and I think the seventy-dollar one requires the fingerprint. So that probably goes into the federal database.
Yes.
The BCI...
That one just registration, that's the state.
So that's it? So it wouldn't go to federal?
And your website, like your social media.
Well, have you talked to the sheriff in there? Because when I was discussing the COPP program, they would be fingerprinted on the background.
Did you get your response from that, by the way? Slightly?
Right now, what...
I'll do a nap, we'll talk later.
What took place in there is targeting communication right now.
Okay. We'll just say it's gonna be seventy dollars, that's why if it's thirty-five, it's less. Now, here's the deal, how many, how many members you got?
Five.
Five?
How many members you have?
Three.
So what's the max, so the max is five? The max is five, the only board? So you're looking at, we'll say seventy dollars, three hundred fifty bucks a year. Do you guys got, I hate to say it, but it's gonna come out of your line item, because that's the way we have to do it.
Yeah. I'd rather it than not.
Yeah, I agree, so I think we leave it in there.
Is everyone on the same page?
Yeah.
Mister Cook, what do you think?
Oh, we gotta do something, I mean, we gotta protect ourselves.
Okay.
Alright, so we're good on that one?
But instead of what I'm looking at here also, Mister Reynolds...
Just call me Ethan, Mister Cook.
Instead of the five on the board, what I want to try to do is put one council member, one citizen...
That's coming out here. That's a hundred, that's our next section, where you get to...
Right, but I mean, instead of five on that board, where you just got three on the board, you got one president, who has already been charged by a council member, and then one citizen, that takes care of three people, all you're gonna investigate.
In other words, you're advocating cut the board from five to basic three?
Mm-hmm.
I think we should have five, even if those current members don't attend, because what's the average on our board, as a center board?
Oh, they're, well, it depends, Tax Review, I think, has three, but has one vacancy, and the rest are five.
Yeah, so I think...
Yeah.
I think we should stick with the five, to be uniform, yeah, to keep it uniform for the rest, rest of our committees, my personal opinion. Mister Shannon, how do you feel about that?
Well, how are we gonna handle the council member that's appointed to this board? Are they gonna be subject to a background check?
Yeah, why not? We're elected, so we better know that's one.
Do you guys have background checks done for political stuff?
No, you don't need that, you just have to work for office.
No, nothing like that.
Just work for the Attorney General's office, like I do, you do.
Well...
Wait a minute, we can get our background checks on Facebook, what are you talking about?
That's true. Oh, God, what happened, I wanted to...
Yeah, if you're still carrying, they do a background check.
Lindsay's on, Lindsay's on your board, and save us seventy bucks a year.
I'm, he's a, I was just gonna...
Yeah.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go.
Like guns, he would have to be background checked.
So, yeah, so for staff liaisons and staff liaisons, I think, are we good with that section there, ladies and gentlemen?
Yeah, you know, I don't, where are we going with the whole?
Hold on, we're taking out driving check, right?
Yeah.
It's a background check and drive, okay. So like that. Is approved by city council, is approved by the... Oh, there's already the city council there, so...
Yeah, and then I'll make that next class, is any park, any board or commission appointee, yeah, they'll be sworn into office, and will be given to the Human Resources Department, which probably should be the mayor, considering it's a city.
All right, this sentence no longer makes sense now. There's a criminal background check is approved by the, you know what, we can worry, I can worry about the wording later.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, are we doing this whole document? Okay, alright, are we doing this whole document, and like, do I have to sit there and make the final changes of this whole master document?
I'm sure we're gonna, no, obviously accept sections of this.
No, I'm just saying, if I have to go back and reword all this, 'cause some of this stuff's not gonna make sense after we slash this out, that's gonna take some time, this is a fifty-five page document.
Well, if you give me the changes, I can make the changes.
Okay.
'Cause I've got this whole more document.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna probably accept a lot of this, 'cause we don't need a staff liaison.
Yeah, the staff liaison.
We can literally skip that entire section, we don't need a supervisor.
Are we doing, are we doing anything else with the remainder of the crap background check stuff?
Nope, I don't think the last part, that says, uh, the.
Do you have it marked under?
Yeah.
Will reconvene that way.
On files, okay.
Fantastic.
Perfect, good thing that they knew.
Staff liaisons.
So, totally we skip that part.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Council, city council liaison.
No, we need that part, but skip supervisor and staff liaison, 'cause no one wants to ask us.
Supervisor's done too?
Yeah, we don't need anyone.
Did there mention a council in there, or can I just delete the whole thing?
Next page on nine.
So I can delete that whole thing?
Yep.
Okay, scrap, let's not delete this, this one, gone, so supervision, gone, oh, okay, it's the city council, boom.
So, city council, so, city council liaison, the members of the city council assigned by the city council, to the city board or commission, which act as a link between the board and the commission and the council, the city council liaison is not directly, uh, direct, are not directed by the board or commissions, but work closely with the chair and members of the board or the board commission. City council liaisons are assigned to the boards and commissions, where the city council and or the board or commission have identified the benefits, identify, council liaison, council liaison are not members of the board, and do not have the rights, offices before the board and commission, but may participate in discussion before the board or commission. Anyone have any objections to that? No?
Alright. And that paragraph can go into the other boards that Mr. Cook wants to go on, like the finance committee, so that one can apply to that as well, too?
Yes.
Okay, make a note.
Well, you're good, non-charter committees.
Non, oh, that's a good term, non-charter committees.
Yeah, I, I read it, it's not that, but it's.
Okay, um, how am I making?
So, some of the responsibilities of the city council liaisons include, intend to offer meetings of the signed boards and commissions, advise the board and commission of any council activities related to the board and commissions, advise the city council of the activities conducted by the board and commission, coordinate semi-final presentations, I like kind of the last one, semi-final presentation on the activities of the board or commission at a council order session. What do you guys think? Okay, council, any objections to that?
No? All quorums are good?
Semi-final presentation. Awesome.
Is that all quorum, quorum's good?
Uh, that was under the city council liaison.
Okay, I'm good.
That whole, uh, meetings, the structure, the definition of a meeting is a period, gathering the majority of the members of a public body for the purpose of discussing public business, the ordinance, or resolution, creating a board and commission, provides how many meetings will be scheduled, when they will occur, and the meetings when they will take place. I think, uh, we should take out the ordinance or resolution creating the board or commission, provides how many meetings will be scheduled, and when they will occur, because let's say I see more than two meetings in a month, because there's been an event, we should just limit it to two meetings.
Okay, so that's gone.
What do you think, what, council, do you agree with that? I mean, we add meetings to our schedules all the time, we're here to talk now, so, alright.
Well, we could keep it in there, but you would have to redo the, amend the ordinance every time they need.
Yeah, well, that's what we're not gonna do.
I would refuse that.
But, awesome, sorry.
You're good.
It's also, uh, sorry, it also specifies whether, if how special meetings should maybe be called, yeah, so, that whole section, we would, so now we're on the quorum.
Am I keeping the last of the meeting is conducted based on the agenda prepared, yeah, that needs to stay out, like, stay.
The last sentence, though, which is, uh, will also specify whether and how.
Yeah, I got that, yeah.
With the meeting conducted based on the agenda prepared prior to the meeting, should stay.
Gotcha, okay.
Alright, quorum, quorum is the middle number of voting members of the board and commission, that must be present in order for the board and commission to take action on a matter, if a member must abstain from voting due to conflict of interest, the member is required, uh, is required in order to have a quorum, this must not be heard or acted upon until a sufficient number of members are allowed to vote, and, to vote are present, uh, the quorum remains the same even if vacancies exist, so.
Oh, how's that pop?
Well, because if there's, right now, let's say, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Lardy, Mr. Lowry, all have great illnesses, and they're not here, uh, we don't have a quorum, however, let's say, they all are removed from council, those seats are not filled, those seats don't actually have a body, so possibly it would be the majority of the new quorum until those vacancies are going, that's what I'm saying.
So that's not saying, like, if they have a five-person board and two people couldn't come, those three there are gonna be the majority of the two ones?
Well, if two people don't come, and three are there, and so that's a majority.
So that's a majority?
Yeah, but if there's two people there and three people can't come, that's not a majority, they can't, unless those three are vacancies.
Gotcha.
Got it?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um, does anyone have any comments, questions, on this page? Yeah, the ordinating ordinance to the resolution, which specifies the city board and commission may specify the number of voting members needed for a quorum, which we already have at turn, so we're gonna need that line in there, if there's five members on the board, so, does not include a majority of the non-positions, the commission quorums may vary.
Is that the whole thing gone, or just horseshit?
That whole thing is gone.
Okay.
Done, okay, if there's not a quorum, action by the city board and commission may not take place, which we already know, so that seems fine, uh, if a city board and commission member, uh, momentarily leaves the room, drink a water, freshen brain, or phone call, and less than a quarter of the day, no business may be conducted, which I think everybody knows, and that's fine, leaving must be stopped until the city board and commission member returns to restore the meeting quorum, okay? See any part of the quorum legislation at all, I think that, before we go.
On quorum?
Yeah.
What, you, oh, we got rid of the?
The second paragraph. Yeah, just that little part.
I got rid of the whole thing?
Yeah.
This whole second paragraph?
Yep.
Cool.
And then frequency of the meetings, city charter or regency, so it shouldn't often be issued for a meeting, frequency of the meetings can be strict, 'cause that's a precedent set.
Should we have something in there to strike it out, to be like, frequency of meeting, have a sentence there, will be called at the leisure of the board?
Discretion, yeah.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
Frequency of the meetings, what did I say, will be what? Frequency of the meetings will be determined by the board?
Yeah. You guys okay with that, so you guys can choose when you guys have your meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we doing the board or board president?
Well, just like with us, I can, I can call meeting council, call it, and, so I think it's the board and the board president.
Okay, so now it's one little thing on the frequency of meetings, so the frequency of the meetings will be determined by the board, excuse me.
Absences, uh, the city board and commission members are tested in all meetings, and the city board or commission members going to be absent at the meeting, their membership will provide, they have to notice, they can have to, the chair and the board staff, so, we don't need a staff liaison, uh, because we don't have one, for the board or commissions as soon as possible, uh, excessive absences may result in members being removed from the board or commission per the process defined in the city charter, which we do not have a process to find in our charter for this board, because you get to it exists when it was done, so, I don't have a charter, I don't have a charter with me.
It's defined by these bylaws, doesn't there a removal procedure in these bylaws somewhere?
No, that's, it's by the charter, you have, they only have their, and then their board is codified by the charter.
Oh.
We don't, so.
I think BZU is.
Well, yeah, but not this one, too, but.
Oh, gotcha.
Uh, so I think what we just do is do the same rule we have on council, after three non-excused absences, they forfeit their seat, uh, someone didn't comply, council will link people up, you guys feel it, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Really have to submit, and that, just, I would just literally copy from the charter, about excused absences for the council, just to put it on a meeting.
What if you just reference the charter, absentee, absentee use?
Because it's only for council, not for the boards, so we have to specifically say it in their creation of the document, could, had, if someone could say, I'm not a councilman, so that's a button, like, this can be changed.
I just gotta refer to the charter for removal, bro.
Alright, role election and the terms of the chair and vice chair, the chair shall, the chair elected by the board or commission shall preside at the board or commission meeting, and the absence of the chair and the vice chair also elected by the board and commission, or the person elected by the board and commission shall preside, um, board and commissions should refer to the city charter or the original ordinance for the resolution, so.
Do you want role election terms in chair?
Yep.
Can I, can we back up just one minute, right above that, there's a staff liaison comment in the last paragraph referring to removal, or absences, I'm sorry.
Yep, there's a staff liaison, keeps the record of all absences.
Yeah, so who do you want to keeps the record of the absences?
Chair.
The board chair?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, that's alright, I think you're funny.
The board chair, keeps record of all absences, okay, got it.
Alright, now let's see, how do you guys have it set up in yours, give me one second, officers and duties, the board shall elect from its members a chair and vice chair, which shall preside over all board and commission meetings, so, doesn't really say, neither one how they're being elected, but terms of the chair has no. Alright, the chair, the vice chair, that's fine.
I don't think there's anything spelled out without the planning board, it left their president, I think they just vote amongst themselves, don't they?
Yeah, which, it, I, it says in the charter, out, the, the board shall appoint, and.
I don't think the BZA has a president, per se, the planning board.
They have a chairperson, 'cause BZA is out of the chair, it's board, right?
No, that's planning.
That's planning, she was the chair for that.
She still is the chair.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that's, I think this section is fine here, um, yeah, it says unless provided by the city charter or, or, or the equipment or resolution, the chair and vice chair are elected among the members, yeah, this is majority vote, do you guys have that? I'll, it'll be up to you guys, council, can you hear?
Alright.
Law, regulations, and policies.
Are the, is the chair and vice chair doing one-year terms?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like the other boards.
Okay.
But it can be, we live in this, make time, so you guys can see.
Gotcha, okay.
Then terminals.
Shumstein walls.
We need to keep that.
Yeah.
Communication among city board members.
Okay, city council members and city commission members, what, meaning among city board and commission members? People, are I got council members or commissioners?
They have the council members, commissioners are for, the commission is for, like, we have the civil rights commission, so, they have boards and commissions, we just have boards.
Uh, so we just need to knock out the commission and communication among the city board and leave it at that?
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
Because this just includes that, like, your face-to-face conversations, you guys obviously can, uh, kind of have hand signals, that's how you're gonna go, and, uh, prior discussion, uh, you could, uh, you could talk with members, but you can't, you can't have a quorum, so it can't be pretty, you guys can talk prior to a meeting about an issue, deciding on that issue, so.
So all I did was a strikeout or commission, or commission in the first sentence.
Oh, there's commissions all through there, then?
Yeah, let's, strike in that?
Right.
What?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, so I continue on swiping out commission?
In that section.
No, no, we keep in that section, 'cause that is required by law.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, now we're on, uh, meetings to the open, to the public, which, uh, the public has the right to attend and observe public meetings, so, did the city board, any comments, questions, or concerns on that? No, no. Okay. Uh, physical meetings, what is?
Yeah, there is, there.
Yes.
Yeah, so, open to the public, it must take place in a large enough room, you can't make public attendees, I think that's fine, right, with the meetings, like, they can choose where they host their meetings, but this would be reasonable for the public to make an attempt to attend, so if they choose like a restaurant, like, that's public, or something, they won't be able to reach here, is that alright, Mr. Cobb?
Alright.
Offsite meetings, the location of the board meeting should not be changed unless certain expenses are beyond their control, yeah, that's completely fine, if a bar cage is loaded, this is loaded, you can have it at a restaurant, have it at a restaurant, just make sure that, we talk to the restaurant owner, try to make sure that the people come in, uh, or the library, or wherever, public notice, this will not be, uh, the staff liaison is responsible, it'll be the chairs responsible for ensuring the proper evidence and meetings provided.
What section you want, I'm still on.
Public notice.
Public notice, and what's coming out, staff liaison?
Yeah, you just put the chair, so who's the chair person?
Randy.
Randy, okay, so she'd be responsible for ensuring that, that this is our second. Who's like the secretary?
The commission.
Nice job.
The commission.
So are you responsible?
That's one section.
Are you responsible for taking the minutes?
Randy.
Randy, okay. She's here, 'cause it's her, it's her.
Alright, where yours at?
Go around public notice.
And there's a staff liaison mentioned in public notice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a meeting on site, meeting in public notice.
And she literally just say.
Was it on site, do you want, who is?
Did she say the chairperson?
The chairperson, okay.
For instance, staff liaison is chairperson in this regard, they have a lot of the gritty life of public boards, it's exciting, uh, meeting minutes, anyone have any questions, and just, that you guys, if you were part of that?
You see where it says city board and commission members? Should we, you see that, second, second one?
Hundred minutes? I got all.
Public minutes, public minutes.
Yeah, I got it, thank you. Okay, so all four of them.
Any comments, questions, that ends it all?
Uh, we have something about the agenda quick system, our board and commission meetings will be kept as public, permanent public records, and be posted on the city's website through the agenda quick system.
We can edit that part out?
I'm just gonna keep, has public records, and then take out that. Mine's all messed up, so I'm adding comments, I'm personally on page sixteen.
Sixteen.
But I don't think it's even close to where you guys are.
It's, it's at the top of sixteen.
Yeah, I just saw that, I was like, I'm not seeing, come on.
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, so you can edit that, make that relevant to us.
Yeah, we'll knock it out. Okay, so page sixteen.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're knocking this part here, just adding one applies to us.
You're tracking the top three?
Just that sentence.
Okay, just a minute. Which one?
You've already taken out.
I did.
Posted on the city's website, correct, 'cause it would, I'm, I do that.
I'm listening and reading at the same time.
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, minimum, that should include, yeah, typical rules. And written minutes must be taken, seventeen, meeting agenda. You guys don't mind, you're gonna tell me what you guys, while you're at it, that's your, it's your agenda. Apologies, I didn't use that, I missed it, mind you, it's in to you guys.
Got, got a few things on that.
Yeah, change, okay, I'm taking mine, here, chair and the city manager, or clerk of council, you, okay, hold on, physical structure immediately determined by the agenda, which is created by the chairperson, in consultation with the board, in consultation with, I mean, 'cause it, right now, it says the chairperson has to do, would do in consultation with the other board members, which I guess is okay.
Yeah.
But I don't think, should they have to report to? And, this physical structure immediately determined by the, which is created by the chairperson, period, or should we keep it in there, to consult with the other people, in consultation, can that be struck out, you think?
Yeah.
That means we get rid of the whole sentence, okay, okay. I'm not gonna worry about all these org commissions at this point, I'll get it later.
Yeah, yeah, uh, do you guys have anything staying on your agenda, how should we say, you guys okay with that, states in here?
Um, no, I think it's.
Done? Okay, good deal, so I think the meeting agenda is good, correct now, uh, voting, abstaining, voting of conflicts of interest, this is almost a review of the, of the sunshine wall, so, if there's a conflict, you can't eat out, if you're having a fundraiser or something out there, but, my, my house, I should put it there, but it's not, so, just making sure that we are above that place, not above, that's what the common board, sorry, is it checking the minutes? Yeah, so, I think that's fine, what is we want to do, oh, and maybe the missile, it actually has like the layout for the agenda, you guys think that's okay?
I forgot, I was falling down. Um, I got it on page sixteen, that's where I'm on.
Yeah, alright, your agenda, alright, so we're done with that part? All right, so we're done with that part.
I'm looking like it.
Conducting, yes, conducting agenda.
Conducting the meeting?
I'm on page eighteen.
You're on eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which I think would be fine, just tells them how to conduct it, one must be present, uh, to conduct it, it would go to these, I remember, has to like make motions, speak in debate mode, so I think that's, this is typical stuff. Duties of the chair and vice chair, this is for you guys. Uh, it is the duty and responsibility of the chair to see, that the rules for conducting a meeting are followed. A summary of those duties include, but are necessarily limited, the list is below, which is on page nineteen. The board should open the meetings and be appointed by taking the chair seat and calling the meeting to order, having, uh, determination that the quorum is present and announcing. Yeah. You guys okay with all that? Just tells you.
Yeah.
That's pretty much generalism there. And being able to insert, like, that's why I'm not getting, I think it's our.
Yeah.
Pretty front to back, sure, I keep, I should forward, I'm like, oh, man.
The whole front to back, it's in every time.
I just, I hit the wrong button. Uh, members also respond, handling guidance for agenda, I think that's typical of this council, so I don't know if there's any changes you made there unless you all have anything.
Well, what, I'm gonna say this, after our changes, after this meeting, you know, we can adjust this thing. This is not something that.
I, I just wanna get it through for them.
Get it through for them and then this is over.
Brilliant.
Meeting, at some point, we're gonna put it all together and pass it, but, you know, if you wanna make changes, be mindful.
Look at this. It's hitting the table.
Yeah.
That's why I screwed my chair back.
Oh, Lord. Randy, put it across the iron, and I started looking at it.
Don't even, you called me fat when I was cleaning up stuff, did you?
No, I didn't, no.
Did, was it you?
Wasn't me. Wasn't me.
Oh, it's my father.
So, twenty-two, twenty-one's motion, page twenty-two's motion, I think that's completely normal and acceptable. This is, uh, twenty-one down to one. So twenty man is a formal process of approval by member, meeting him and then the board and commission to take a certain action on. I think that's pretty normal here.
Now, look at this little cheat sheet. You see that? Yeah, it's awesome. I'm gonna print that out. That's good.
Print out laminated.
Yeah.
Okay, now, provide for this voting, uh, abstaining, uh, voting, abstaining from voting in conflict of interest. I think we all agree that's needed. Twenty-nine.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-nine? After that, literally, just typical government.
Overtage. Overtage.
Overtage. I didn't wanna say voting, but. Uh, responsibilities outside of meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, like the law, the, uh, the notion, it's a bio and, uh.
Does the city have a code of ethics?
It does, yeah.
I know, it's there. Except this, it has one.
Um, crap, on the internet.
I don't believe that in the deal.
Have you ever seen the code of ethics?
No, and all my.
You have seen it.
I left this thing in there because that was one of my questions.
It seems like to me, I don't remember anything passing since I've been here, and that's about six years. So anything back in the day you remember them doing?
I don't remember ever.
Mr. Cobb, you remember them doing anything for ethics? I'll look.
Is this something maybe we need to do?
The code of ethics that we do have is a charter in some of these states that almost verbatim is that council, uh.
Do you guys have a code of ethics in your, in rule of council?
No, in our charter we do, and it just plainly states that gross misconduct, period, which means that needs to be changed. Which means that gross misconduct is anything that council thinks is, which.
That can get you some trouble.
Well, twenty thirteen, so.
But, you know, I don't mean open a can of worms here, but.
Too late, no. It needed to be open.
Yeah, I think we probably skipped that part. Uh, the one thing is executive sessions, uh, on page twenty-seven, which I'm going back to because, again, sorry, I'm really out of order here. Uh.
Did you hear that?
Did you hear that? Maybe you guys, help me, you guys see any reason to go into executive session? I don't know.
I don't, I don't think they can.
Any board, getting, public meetings, yeah, any public board can.
Even a quasi-board like that, though?
Yeah. This is a hospital.
No offense.
Seriously.
Oh, I didn't know.
I, I would not know of any reason.
Yeah.
I think this, this puts something in there that gives them the capability of it.
Even, even if it's in there?
Whoa, 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 wait a minute, there's only seven things you can go to executive session for in state of Ohio.
Yeah.
They're not gonna follow under any other seven.
Yeah, that's why I think it's possible that we just remove it, cause instead.
Cause it's like, it's, it's, employment?
Just example of property.
Legals?
Uh, are you creation?
It's all good training. Everything here is pushing.
It's lying, thank you.
No, that's too much. I'm telling you right now, there's seven things in state of Ohio you can legally go into.
Yeah, and it's.
Well, you know what?
I was gonna say, some of the things that keep pushing though.
Several fall under. Several fall under the same, like, employment dismissal, dissonance, promotion, motion would be one.
That is actually how it reads?
Yes.
In the sunshine law.
Gotcha. So these probably are right.
Investigation, investigation, so it gets called employee, official license.
Yep, those are it.
Yeah, it's, all this is breaking it down to twenty-five point, instead of where the sunshine law just puts it all together. So, yeah, I don't see why they would need that, cause you're not gonna be demoting anybody or.
Buying any property.
Yeah.
If they've got a problem on their committee, it's gonna come back to council, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think if it warrants them going to executive session, it needs to go to council.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
That's why I think we should probably remove it, and if they have an issue with their board members not coming, and they say, hey, wanna get rid of this guy, look out.
Well, should they be able to go into executive session for that and then refer that to city council?
I think we should probably have open discussion with all of us.
Well.
Are the members, are the members of the board appointed by council?
Yes, certainly. So I believe we have the duty to remove them.
But themselves should be able to go into an executive session to.
Decide if we want to.
And then bring it to council.
To council.
After that, you know.
They're public board, they can go into executive session if they want, I mean, if that's something you guys.
Yeah, but it doesn't. But he'd still, if they go to executive session, that needs to be notified to council if they done that.
Yeah, and then obviously council will be able to attend that executive session because they are a subsidiary of them.
Yeah, you really have a member of council to attend.
Yeah.
So do you wanna just do, um, so my question to this, and this has become almost a borderline legal question, no, it's not, it's there, we just keep see dismissal, dismissal of current member.
What we do is simple, is we just leave it in the whole executive session closet in there, because they are a public board and they can go to executive session anytime. It doesn't matter if it's a hospital board, a library board, parks board, zoning appeal, any public board, it's given authority by their, uh, by the, uh, entity which would be council, so I think they should be able to go.
Just put in for reasons, out of.
Yeah, just like, just like.
Let me ask you this, if we kept it in there as it is, would they be able to go into city council executive sessions? Cause the same reason that you have listed, well, you may think that, but you gotta think of.